Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. Board of Education is a body of school district residents elected by the community and charged with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for improper display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. We do have visitors tonight, we can go over the directions a little bit more closely as that time comes. Charlotte, would you mind doing roll call? Please.
Aiden.
Aiden Warner. Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Leon.
Here.
Mrs. Joffre Davis.
Present.
Mr. Spindel.
Here.
Mr. Grohl.
Present.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Thank you, Charlotte. Tonight, we have a lot of exciting presentations. Our first one is going to be boys indoor track. Or not just the boys indoor track, but indoor track. Paige Hardy, Connor Des Moines, and Pete Beulah, I don't know if they're...
Do you want those?
Yeah, thank you, Polly. If you're something, so.
Hello, friends.
Hello, Mr. Beulah.
We didn't break the sixty. But we have our two of our amazing student athletes who are not only record holders but went to the skate competitions. So we have, can you reach your bubble a bit? This is our channel. Ah, how much time do we have? So this is Connor Des Moines and Paige Hardy. Paige is a sophomore, Connor is a junior, I apologize, I just came out of the track. Paige owns both records for pole vault and the outdoor and indoor season. Connor's got the mile and two mile right now for the indoor season. Outdoor, he also has the steep with chase, the mile. As you know, the indoor program, we've been around since two thousand and two, two thousand and ten. We had a little hiatus and now we're back. So when they get down the record board, it's a huge deal. You know, the goal is always to try to keep your name there as long as you want, as long as you can kind of deal. For state qualifiers, the states at the indoor level is quite impressive how you even get there. Like in outdoor, they break you down into two divisions. We have a D1 and D2. And even for outdoor, for us, we gotta beat Potato High School, Aquinas, University Prep to get to the state level. That's outdoor. Indoor, nothing. It's just absolutely best of the best. You jump on the track and here we go. So for them to make it to that level is just so impressive. Obviously, they worked their buns off to get there. Paige calls twice a week in Rochester. We have an amazing connection out there with a former coach I knew from SUNY Geneseo. I mean Connor is running, like if he was a car, he'd give oil changes once a week. You know, he's running more than some people during their life a week, I can feel. So well-deserved honor, definitely represent our program at the highest heights. And most importantly, we thank you guys for this opportunity. Last year was a trial run. This year, we went all in, of course. We had about fifty or sixty people in the hall, which is actually great. I mean, our participation is up. Outdoors, we're busting at the seams, which is amazing. We got seventy, which is amazing. We got a decathlon starting tomorrow, goes back to Coach Goldstein in the nineteen eighties. We break up into teams, that's why we pick teams. Ten events ranging from free throws, sit-ups and push-ups, bench press, something for everyone to compete on in the next couple of weeks. Kind of get the team camaraderie going on. But, and these guys went to Nationals as well for the indoor meets, both in Boston, correct? So it's just so cool to see these, you know, see not only our amazing athletes, but OAE represented in these humongous meets where it's like, wow, you come from, you graduate sixty. So it's, they definitely stand out for sure. Any questions for them or what am I leaving out?
Paige and Connor, I just, I want to congratulate you. You certainly make us proud and what's great is we have at least another year with you and another two years with you. To do that as a junior and a sophomore is absolutely incredible. You make us all proud and that's the reason you're here tonight. And, you know, congratulations, keep working hard, we're rooting for you and we're just, I'm overjoyed just hearing what you can accomplish because it's absolutely amazing and incredible. So, you know, congratulations.
Yeah, these amazing experiences that you have at such a young age, you'll never forget. You'll always look back and you'll probably have lots of more experiences like this. But the challenges that you're gonna be up against, you'll always be able to fall back and say, I did it. I can still do it and I'm gonna do it even better at another stage, whatever that is that you guys decide to do. So thank you so much for representing us and yourselves at such a high level.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, friends.
Take care. You're like a bailiff, right?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Administration, Board of Education for having us here and recognizing this group of kids' accomplishments. I think by recognizing them, I think not only do we get to recognize their success on the court, but these kids were all, you know, they were scholar athletes. Each and every one of them ninety even above average. So to balance academics with the athletics, I think is always huge. And I don't get to say this enough to people in the community, but when you travel and you take your kids to various venues, they represent our district incredibly well. They're a pleasure to, you don't ever have to worry about them in public. They conduct themselves as young adults in the way it's supposed to be done. So about our run, it was, you know, I think we cliched magical, it was. The three teams we beat in the quarterfinals, semifinals, and finals had a combined fifty-six and six record when we beat them. So I think that was incredible and I think just the grit and perseverance that they showed. We dealt with some injuries really from the beginning of the year with Elena, then Macy got hurt, then McKenna got hurt right before sectionals started. The fact that they didn't let that hold them down and they stepped up and kids really, you know, performed incredibly well in three pretty tough games down the stretch. So couldn't be prouder. It's just a magical thing and the support we have from the school district, which is always great in our community at Rush Hutter Geta for that final was really fabulous. And yeah, it's a pretty special group of kids and it's something I think they'll always remember for sure. They got to see their old coach do some stupid dances, whatever they wanted him to do. So it was great and it's memories that'll last them a lifetime for sure and for me as well. So I appreciate you having us and taking the time to recognizing us and having us come in and really this is all about them and what they were able to accomplish as a team. And I think it really kind of epitomizes what it's all about. So, thank you.
Congratulations, girls. I have to say that you're fun, you were fun to watch all season long. And I guess what really touched me is your last game and there wasn't a dry eye on your bench. I mean, obviously you were upset that you weren't moving forward, but that goes and shows something that you cared and you were hugging each other and supporting one another. And you never quit. You were out there all the time on the floor. You'd come off and, you know, you're sweaty and out of breath and I have to tell you that it was, it was just fun to watch you on the court, working as a team, playing hard. And like Coach Leganoff said, you did it the whole season with class. And like he said, to keep your academics up, basketball's a long season, it's a hard season, you're practicing every day, you have these games and you're traveling, you know, hours to get to some of these places. And it never seemed to, you never seemed to waver and you were always here that next morning, seven fifteen, seven thirty, walking through those front doors with a smile on your face. And it was just, it was fun to watch. So congratulations on your sectional championship and really set the bar high and can't wait to see what you guys do next winter season. But congratulations, it was a lot of fun and I enjoyed the ride watching you.
Mr. Chris, there's one more thing and I would be remiss. You know, yeah, I'm the head coach, but I, you know, I've got assistants and Tracy and Kylie were there. But Coach Clark's been there for the last ten years and she does a lot of things behind the scenes that people don't see. I mean, stuff for these kids during the sectional run, little goodie bags with these cool sayings that were in the locker room, were on the bus. And like I tell everybody, like I think almost every single one of these kids played for her at some point. So she does an incredible job of getting them ready to come up and play at the varsity level. And Gianna spent the season on the JV level and came up at varsity and kind of stepped right in and did a great job. So, you know, a huge shout out to Coach Stephanie Clark and getting these kids ready for us at the varsity level. And yeah, it's, you know, the only thing that takes a village, but it really does and couldn't do what we do without the support we get. So thanks. Appreciate it.
You guys are role models to so many girls. I hope you know that, you know, throughout the season, my daughter plays on the sixth grade youth team and her teammates would come and they would watch you guys. And when you won sectionals, I can remember all of them saying, wow, that could be us one day, you know? So you've got a lot of little eyes watching you. You played with grace, you played with class, you played with heart. So thanks for being great role models for our girls to look up to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
How you doing, guys? So you ready to go? All right, so you've got something for us tonight, a little bit of a presentation I think that you did at your Lego competitions, right? All right, guys, go for it.
Good evening, we are First Lego League, Team Four Six Four Six, from Oakdale, Alabama Central School. We'd like to thank Mr. Pete Beulah for inviting us tonight to share our project review with you. We presented it this winter at our FLL competition. FLL is more than playing with Legos and building robots. Your team, we are learning to become innovators, problem solvers, and leaders of tomorrow.
This year's FLL theme was superpowered. We were challenged to learn about energy and come up with our own innovative solution to our current, to our current problem related to energy. We choose to look right here at our own school community to see if we can make a difference. With New York State's goals for eliminating diesel buses in not-so-distant future, we thought it would be worth looking at the different options available for our school. Special thanks to Mr. Beulah and Mr. Josh Luxon for helping us with our research. With their help, we were able to learn about the many different kinds of energy available and what the proposed school bus changes would mean for our school.
We'd like to share our innovative, innovative project presentation with you now. It might just be worth looking into as we consider options for our school. So please sit back and enjoy our presentation of Back to the Future, the Future Is Now.
The role of Nate Stabell will be played by Assistant Coach, yours truly, Gabe Hudson.
Hey, Josh, what's up? What's up? You don't look so happy.
Hi, kids, Yamo preoccupied, trying to figure out how to commute all the new buses we're going to New York for school converts to electric buses in a few years. It's going to be a lot more expensive than I thought.
Why Marty and Josh, a bus is a bus, isn't it?
It was just that easy, Marty. We'll need twice as many buses because of all the charging times and new infrastructure for our campus with multiple charging stations. The expenses are overwhelming. Now, when do you look so worried?
There's gotta be another way, Josh.
Marty, is that you? I'm back from the future, it's great to see you all again.
Hey Doc, you dress up person we need. Josh, our school's director of transportation, trying to find a better solution for alternative energy sources for our school buses.
I researched electric buses, I just don't think they'll work for us. Charging times are full climate, can't throw the battery in the buses in the garage for the fire risk. It's really going to be a big change for us and I mentioned expensive.
What about other renewable sources for energy, like manure digesters? They have lots of that on here.
I hate manure.
Ew! Me hate manure.
Great, Scotty, you're not thinking four dimensionally. Of course there are other solutions.
Wait a minute, Doc, are you telling us you have another renewable energy source for our school buses?
Of course, Marty. If you put your mind to it, you can accomplish anything.
Hello, hello, anybody home? Of course Doc can help us, he knows everything.
I used to think plutonium was the answer to everything, but it's not so easy to find. So what you need to do is find a renewable source of energy that is powerful enough to run the school buses, reliable and readily available to use in our area, and easy to manage for your friend Josh. It needs to be easy to deliver to your school with fast refuel time and a good range of travel.
That's exactly what I need.
Doc, what is it?
It's one of my favorite elements, Marty, hydrogen.
Hydrogen!
Well, Doc, hydrogen, how can we use that?
It's simple, Marty, a hydrogen fuel cell.
Ooh, hydrogen fuel cell.
Hey, did you think it's a tall for your nineteen forty-six Ford coupe?
They are quite amazing, efficient too. Hydrogen fuel cell vehicles, they call them FCVs, are like electric vehicles. They use an electric motor to power the vehicle. However, while EVs run on batteries that must be plugged in to recharge, FCVs generate their electricity onboard.
So how's the hydrogen used, Doc?
It's simple, Marty. In the fuel cell, hydrogen gas from the vehicle's fuel tank combines with oxygen from the air to generate electricity. The only byproducts are water and heat.
But isn't it handy and dangerous?
Today's hydrogen vehicles are designed for maximum safety.
I've heard about FCVs and public buses, but none of the school bus.
FCVs are used a lot in the future, in cars, trucks, and even school buses. Hydrogen filling stations are on almost every corner. They refuel in minutes and have a range that can go as far or farther than diesel buses.
So are you saying I wouldn't need twice as many buses and all new infantry for the hydrogen-powered school buses?
Absolutely!
Nonsense!
Doc, we don't have any hydrogen filling stations near us.
Well, get ready, Marty, they're coming.
Hello, my name is Lynn. I represent Plug Power. We are a producer of green hydrogen and we're building a plant right down the road from our school.
I'm George, our new plan's only a minute to Rednae of Fairland, Alabama school.
We can produce and turn for all the hydrogen you need for your school buses.
I like what I'm hearing.
We use a mixture of the green and renewable sources like wind and solar to produce hydrogen.
We harvest hydrogen from water for electrolysis. When we're in a new plant in Alabama, New York, we'll be able to increase our production dramatically.
So that means you have access to plenty of hydrogen for your school buses.
Now, that's what I like to hear.
Well, Doc, you have to solve a problem, we can use current FCV technology in a brand new way.
Josh, what do you think about hydrogen-powered school buses?
I think it'll be a hit with our school. I'm going to transfer our team to school board right away. If it's a removal and energy requirements, it won't bring your money. What's probably going to save the day?
Well, Doc, this is one of our best ideas.
Like I always say, Marty, if you put your mind to it, you can accomplish anything.
This is too much. Come on, guys, let's wait like a tree and get out of here.
Thanks, Doc, you really know.
Well, thank you, I must get back to my travels, see you in the future.
So, guys, not to cut into this, but I feel like you've been doing this since August. You've been researching, you've gone on field trips, you've done so much, so much work to get yourselves ready for the competition. And I see some things that you are holding back there. Carson, that seems like that's a trophy of some sort. Can you talk to us a little bit, Mr. Shetler, about that trophy there?
Yeah, this is our qualifier that we went to and it was October, I believe, or November. Yeah.
It's okay, it's something that happened, right? It was a pass.
Um, we got, we won that competition. We were able to move on to the regionals in Rochester, which was about a month ago. And we weren't, we were unfortunately not able to win that one, but we did pretty well to get that one.
It was a pretty crazy competition. I think there was like around forty-three, forty-two teams there and it was amazing to see you guys competing up on stage. And Mr. Beulah was there as well and it was just, it was so cool to watch you guys. And then I think you have your actual robot there, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, talk to us a little bit about that. How did that come to be?
So in the beginning, we had, we figured that we should use this cage because we figured there's a lot more pull and push measures. So the cage, it can grab it so it can pull it and it can use this to push it.
So I needed a lot of help watching this. I love sports and I understand sports pretty well, but when I was going to these events, I know there's a couple of times I looked at Mr. Beulah and said, should we clap or not clap right now? I don't know, we're just watching the kids' faces. So it was, it's a really crazy thing. There's this like this huge board with missions that you have to do, right, guys? And then every time you complete like one of those tasks, you get points, right? So this was great, this was a fantastic thing. I think again, another time, Mrs. Burpins back there, you see her, she's like, oh my goodness, these could possibly be actors and actresses coming. That was unbelievably well done. Did you guys have fun doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what's behind Josh there? What do we have there, Mr. Luxon? What is this sign back here? So is this, is this the poster they kind of want for your presentation as well?
Yes.
Wow, this is really cool. And then who are the two people standing back behind you, guys?
These are our coaches.
Those are your coaches back there, how they do?
Good. They take care of us.
They take care of us.
Make sure we don't go wild.
You go wild? Well fed, yeah, a lot of stuff, a lot of, a lot of work went into this. So Ms. Mayor and Mr. McNoss, thank you so much, you guys, you did such a great job. Thank you for presenting here tonight, gives us a good idea of what's going on.
Can you do me a favor? I can very easily seeing you present this to the head honchos over at Plug Power in the future. I can see that coming.
I think it works.
What's that?
You can make it happen faster. We've been right up, put on the bat further.
Yes.
One month because of weather and so.
I will definitely be in touch because we periodically, as Plug Power starts to become, you know, the real thing over there at the STEM, I have a feeling that I'm gonna be calling on you to say, why don't you come with me? We have a breakfast or a lunch meeting with some of the head honchos over there and I can see you pitching this to Plug Power.
They can at school, couldn't they? They would have to come lead.
I give you permission to listen. To come with me and a couple of us to Plug Power and like you said, you never know, anything's possible. So keep it in the back of your mind, keep your props and I have a feeling this might come in handy over the next year or so.
I think all the kids, guys did a great job, I think you guys represented us well. But I also wanted to, I think that Kim needs to be, appreciation for Kim and people until you're in the program don't realize the amount of time she dedicates to this and volunteers doing it. I think it's just great what she's built with the kids in our Lego League and I really appreciate the time that you put into it as well.
And I'd like to thank Gabe Hudson, he's three years has been helping us. He's a youth mentor, graduated eighth grade out of us, couldn't do it anymore, but he loved doing it. And he's been helping these kids right along, and here he is in senior year. We're gonna miss him next year. He even jumped in tonight, last minute, filling in. They love him. Coach Gabe.
Thanks again, guys, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you all. Good job, guys.
Great job.
Eight points off. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Mark Kaser for Technologies Condition Survey Report. How you doing, Mark?
That's a hard act to follow.
I walk, I walk.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm just gonna go. Thanks very much, I appreciate your time letting me speak here just for a couple of minutes today. I'm Mark Kaser from Archit Technology and just retired my firm to doing Technology Condition Survey Report, which has some photocopy copies of, but also some of you have the full booklet, which is really two little booklets here, one thicker, one smaller. And I've worked on this project with another colleague of mine, Lars Maris, who couldn't be here today. And he's kind of the brains behind some of the number crunching that went into some of the numbers you're gonna see tonight. And I just kind of managed the project and was also involved in the survey. So we'll just take a look here and go through it. So we're just gonna have several bullet points here, we're gonna tell you a little bit more about our company, Archit Technology. We're gonna talk slightly about the interconnected things in the school building, all the things connected to the internet, which are almost everything. And then we're gonna take a look at the report, which has three parts, and then we'll see about some questions and answers at the end. It won't take very long, I promise. So Archit Technology's been around for about twenty-five years in terms of doing educational technology consulting. We've done this technology condition surveys, what it says right there, at more than twenty-three million square feet of school districts over the last seven years. So we're out there doing this for schools, especially when they're beginning the planning process for capital improvement plans and that kind of stuff to take a look at the, especially the infrastructure part of a school district. We've worked with forty schools around the state, developed these plans, and we have these RCDDs on staff, which is a Registered Communications Distribution Designer, and that's what Lars is on our team here, working with me on this. This slide you'll see in the documentation on pages two and three, so I'm just gonna look at two specific pages. And this is just a real simple diagram, just to kind of show you that everything's connected to your network today and it's gonna be more and more and not less and less. You can just go into your house and say, Alexa, turn on the kitchen lights like I do, and you'll find out how things, what things are connected to your internet today. Everything from safety systems to PA systems, entrance controls, and all of that, and it's all riding on the school's data network. So now we're gonna get into the report and plan. We surveyed a number of different areas in the district. We spent the most conservative amount of time looking at the schools' wiring closets, what we call telecommunications rooms or TRs. We also looked at the network hardware, wired and wireless, looked at the security systems, video surveillance, and intrusion systems. We looked at communications, public address, telephone, instructional systems like what's in the classroom, instructional technology, as well as student and teacher devices. And also involved some of the software subscriptions, which are many. And that's really, those last few items there, the district is well on the way with. Rob has a really good grasp on what's going on and has been planning assistance for many years over here already. And we just kind of grabbed those numbers from him and plugged them into our calculations. So as I said, the Technology Condition Survey Report has three things. It's a technology condition survey, the what we call the telecommunications room, a master plan or TR master plan, and then a ten-year comprehensive roadmap, which is like a spending plan for the next ten years, kind of outlining some things the district should be spending money on moving forward. This is what you're seeing on page four and five of your document. And so the picture on the left is the TR has gone bad and it's in every school. The technology systems, especially in the TR rooms, the telecommunications have been built on year after year, kind of adding more cables in for security cameras and more cables for access points and more cables for different things. And it just becomes layer upon layer and it's never been like gutted and redone. And that's one of the things that we recommend. And so if you look at the good side, made good, this is what a TR, an actual, one of the classrooms or one of the schools that we designed and they built according to the specs that we outlined. And this is what a good TR. And so there are thirteen factors involved, they're listed out there, things we look at when we actually go through and grade the room. And so there are thirteen factors involved, they're listed out there, things we look at when we actually go through and grade, grade the rooms. So we go and take a lot of photographs, you'll see some pictures here. We, we evaluate the pictures, we look, look, look with our RCDD to say, what will it cost to fix this room? Should we abandon this room? Is it, is it worth saving? Or should we, you know, fix it up and continue on? So the technology, the, the physical survey of the building, what you're seeing is on page eighteen and nineteen. If we turn to that real quick here. This is just a typical TR, TR number six, happens to be in the elementary school. And, and you'll see that each one of the, each one of the TRs gets a full two-page spread, just like this, identifying the current, current conditions as we saw the day we visited, the recommended improvements, and then a grade one through four based on, on some of the criteria that we, that we grade upon. And then, and then some, just some key pictures, you know, each one's gonna have three or four pictures showing some of the, you know, typically the wrong things, right? We see a really good TR, we'll put a picture of something good in there, but often times it's the things that really gotta pay attention to that, that need to improve. For example, on this one, number three says abandoned legacy cable still installed in the space. And, and that's, that's a problem in terms of, of safety and fire code. So that's gotta, some things really have to be addressed. We also deal with the other systems, as I mentioned. So you're gonna see some pages in the, in the documents that deal with the communication systems, which are in great shape here at Oakfield, the telephone system is new, the paging system is new, that's a good safety feature, you know, you've got the paging going on in there for lockdowns and that kind of stuff. And so those systems are also graded in there. All right? So just a couple more quick pictures, just to, to show some illustrations. This is page twenty and twenty-one, and twenty-two and twenty-three. Just, these are examples of just two more, you've got eight and nine different TRs between the, between the two buildings, including the bus garage. And these are just some things that, that are out there. And these, you know, these, these, like, for example, the, on the right-hand side there, page twenty-two and twenty-three, that, that's a TR in the woodshop area. And it was put in there probably strategically because that's where the cables need to pull to, but it's in an area that's dusty and dirty and it's not well maintained, and so it's, it's an issue. And so, so if you have a, a telecommunication room that's vulnerable, then your systems are vulnerable. And like we said, because everything's riding on your network system, it needs to be, you know, sort of waterproof if it can be. All right. In addition, so, so once we grade all of those, um, those areas, we're gonna come up with a whole, well, district grade. And you'll find those pages in there as well, pages ten to thirteen. And the district grade is three point two out of four, so pretty good, all things considered. But again, it's very typical in terms of, you know, the schools are, are well versed in terms of, you know, replacing their computer technology on a regular basis, their network switches, and their Wi-Fi access points and all that stuff. But it's the, most of the problem in, in all the schools that we've seen, it's gonna be in those, in those telecommunications rooms. The second part of the, of the report is the TR master plan. That's the other book. So if you look at the other book, what, what we provide is what we recommend to, to, to where the TRs are located and where the wires for each of those TRs are gonna pull to within those, within each of the buildings and the areas. And that's a real important document to have. One, it identifies, for example, there's a TR, if you look at one that says middle high school, is TR number two, says location to be determined. Because in the report, we're gonna show that TR two, we're saying should be abandoned and moved someplace else. So we don't know where it's gonna be at, but we do know where the cable should pull to. And that's an important document to have for when you have a contractor come in or even your own staff, if they're gonna pull new cables for somewhere. You don't want them crossing over the lines and, and pulling cables to the wrong TR, even if it might be closer, because it makes things hard to support and, and leads to confusion. The final part of the report is the ten-year comprehensive roadmap, which if you turn to near the very end, page fifty-four and fifty-five, this is where you'll see where we have kind of added it all up and said, and, and this is a, this is a ten-year spending plan for the district that we're recommending. And, and again, so if you look at those different, um, uh, lines going down, we call those swim lanes in our world. So when the one, two, three, all the way through ten, swim lanes, you know, uh, three through ten are in really great shape, as I understand. You know, it's part of the regular process, you're budgeting for most of that stuff already, it's all in there. But a swim lane is one and two, that typically needs some attention, a swim lane one especially. Now, when you're gonna fix a telecommunication room, it could be expensive. I mean, so, I mean, we're looking at, well, we're recommending here, five hundred thousand dollars to fix the rooms that you guys have today. And, and so that's typically, you build it into a capital improvement plan, or, or, you know, that kind of thing. Because first of all, those last, once they're fixed, they last too long time, and two, it's a, it's a high-ticket item. And, and in often cases, it's unexpected. So, you know, the, all those, all those swim lanes, those are things that are being budgeted, those things are just kind of moving along and, and whatnot. So that's a quick, quick and dirty look at it. You've got the entire report, feel free to go through it. I'll answer any questions you might have about it. And that'll be my presentation. And once we get back, please go ahead.
Yeah, so Mark, I've never seen anything quite like this before in regards to technology. I think it's a really comprehensive report here. And I guess some of the questions that I have is, when you, when you, when you set up a new TR room, so we're gonna have to have that TR room number two relocated or put somewhere else. But you know, if we have our capital project voted on in the past, that's an area in which we're looking at to redo. How long, when, when you redo a TR room, does it have the ability to just continue to add on? So that, so like, so like, when you look at some of these other examples, and, and I, I work in another school district where they look very similar to this. It's like, oh my God, what's going on?
It's, it's absolutely common, right?
Yeah, so it's pretty common, but it seems like there's not a real organized way to add on to the system. It seems like there's no ports or anything.
Yeah, so that, those are great questions. So one of the things we look at when we evaluate the TRs is, for example, are the cables coming in through an appropriate pathway?
Right.
Are the cables laying in cable trays in the ceiling? Are they going into the TR through a conduit, right, or a conduit sleeve? And are the sleeves completely full?
Right.
And, and, and so, and so when we, when we recommend rebuilding, we don't have the, any of those conduit sleeves anymore than two-thirds full at, at, at the time that the project is done, so there's room for more. And, 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 and so, for, for a while there, the, the, there was a thought that, I don't need so many wires in, in my TRs anymore, because we're wireless everywhere, you guys are wireless everywhere. But there's still wires for things. You still got your PA system clock right there, that's got a wire to it, right? And, and, and in many cases, even the lights in the classroom are gonna have a wire to them, because they're gonna be controlled by the internet. And, and, and so, so there's gonna be any for. So we do definitely recommend rebuilding to capacity. One of the other things that, that our company will do is, is we will review designs. We don't do the design work itself, but if, if you have an architect design saying, hey, look at this document that we had created, we want a new TR built, it's gotta be built to capacity, they'll design it and we'll review it. And we'll say, no, it's gotta be done this way, uh, this is not what we're talking about, please change this. And then even beyond that, for, 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 we can do a service where we do technology construction management. And so we'll come in and make sure that not only is it designed appropriately, but then finally it built appropriately, which is sometimes the, the gap that exists.
Has there been, so obviously we're talking about the next capital project, which will be in these areas, is that kind of been looked at between you guys to say, hey, is there somewhere where we have some?
We currently have not, have not worked together yet, but we're, we're really looking forward to it.
That's the time.
So I mean, just, we're gonna be in some of these spaces, is there some cost savings to incorporate some of this stuff into our capital project?
And, and so, so we really do often work with schools when they're just like, getting the capital project planning phase, because that's the time to look at it. And so, so often, these other technology systems are kind of overlooked. Well, I need roofs, and I need windows, and I need the new, new gymnasium and all this kind of stuff, a new pool. But, but what about the stuff that's in the ceilings, you know? And boy, believe me, if you take a ladder in some of the, some of the schools, you go up and open up those ceilings, and it's chaos up there. And it's not, it's not anybody's fault, and I'm really not being critical, it's just the way it's been done, you know? And, and it really is, is true, you know? You, you know, you say to the facility staff, ah, need some more cables down there, we're putting more cameras in. Okay, they pull them in. And it is in there.
Well, it's that, I mean, even on equipment that we have, you keep adding things to it.
That's right.
And it's like you said, nobody's ever just ripped it apart and said, let's start over and do it, everybody just keeps adding things.
And, and oftentimes, I mean, so I, I worked for EdTech for twenty-two years. And that's your guys' record, if you don't know what it is. And, and, and the EdTech guys are awesome at, um, at designing networks, installing network hardware, and cleaning up what you see in what they would call the closets, the TRs. But not beyond the, into the ceiling and what's going on up there, you know? It's all in the closet for them and that kind of stuff. And so it's kind of, that's their focus.
This is a really great document.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We work hard, we really, we really do. And, and, and I appreciate it. If you have any other feedback, I'd love to take it back and if we make any improvements to our, our project or our plan document, we will do that. We've been changing it lately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate all your time. And by the way, you really do have a great school, those kids were great today. I think they have things too, right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, appreciate it.
Let's see, Maggie are back again. We have comfier seats here. I'm talking about the capital project overview. You guys are ready?
Thanks again, appreciate the time. We just have a, a quick update. As you know, last time we went through the proposed capital project, the plans, the budget. Maggie's here to answer all the tough questions on the budget. But we just brought the presentation back in case there's any questions. We added a couple of slides to go through tonight and then kind of see if there's any, um, questions or things we wanna follow up on from having a month for you guys to think about it a little bit. So, you know, this is one of the slides that we added, which is just a summary from our committee of some of the, the voting systems that we used. Those are the little post-it notes. And then we wanted to highlight the, the program items that we really thought were important to the project, and we highlighted last time. But breaking them out in a different way here, just in terms of, um, obviously that back wing. And I think, you know, if you guys decide to go ahead with the technology upgrades, we can certainly look at that. We've worked with, um, organizations like that in hand-in-hand to engineer. Especially like, if you're taking the entire technology area back there, and he's got a closet that needs to upgrade or be moved, that can definitely be incorporated into the project without a problem. So facts and steam, we talked about that last time, and the special rooms we'd be creating as part of the sort of redesign and shuffle around of the locker rooms. Of course, we have the science classrooms and the middle school science concession locker rooms and toilets. The track repairs and resurface, which we talked about last time, would be part of Proposition One, in case Proposition Two doesn't pass. And then Proposition Two is, of course, the, the big stadium that we talked about last time, the site plan. So those are some of the highlights of the program items from the project. And then one of the big components of the total budget was the three point eight million for the BCS items. And just to highlight those a little bit, some of the bullets here that make up those items. We have quite a bit of building-like HBC and electrical. And I was thinking earlier that, um, you know, it would be interesting to take a look at that electrical item and see how it might delta with some of the data and technology upgrades, uh, because there might be some overlap there already. But we can drill down into that item, of course, and take a look at it as it relates to the report that you just heard. Carpet and case work, rooftop relief fence, uh, there's quite a bit in the pool that we've looked at, uh, including tile work, auditory walls, and bleacher replacement. So those are really the highlights of the building condition survey items. And the double asterix at the bottom is just to reiterate the fact that, in essence, there are more BCS items being taken care of than the three point eight million. Because in the plan, where those highlighted areas are, the science rooms, and the technology rooms, and the fax rooms, those rooms by definition are gonna get upgraded, and if there's BCS items within there, they're gonna be taken care of as part of the overall renovation for that space. So that's, that's good to know, that there's other things that are gonna be captured, and are already captured in the cost estimates. This is the last slide we have, that's just a reiteration of the, of the budget. And if there's any questions, I have the entire presentation from last time here, but those are the new slides to just offer for this month.
Refresh, I'm reading, I'm remembering, the twenty-two million, that is both propositions together.
That's correct.
So one is, how much, one is sixteen, was it?
It was fifteen point six total, all in. Um, and on Proposition Two is the, is the track, you know, complex, track and field, that's about six point three million right now.
A question that I can see a community member asking that we don't have the answer to right now, because it's negotiated with ALBA, but is if we, if somebody were to vote yes to Proposition Two, we've got a new turf field, will we still split games with ALBA? Will we potentially just have, how many home football games do we have? Is it two or three?
Usually it's four. Four a year. And then sectionals would be given?
Four.
Here?
No. So how many games do we play here versus how many do we play in ALBA?
Usually split.
Two, two and two.
Yeah.
I can see somebody asking the question, are we gonna build this brand-new football stadium and then still play two games over in ALBA?
Right. Keep in mind though, that, that field is, is gonna be multi-purpose, so it'll have our, the soccer games on there, obviously, you know, the track. But, you know, but that, that may be discussion down the road, that if, that if we have this beautiful new football stadium, maybe we would play all our home games there. I can't answer that, but.
I think it's.
But it's served more than just, than just the football field.
Yep.
Question.
Sure.
Know if, if ALBA's gonna be willing to give on that, if that were to occur.
Sure. Right.
So other than that, we don't have any more questions. We are gonna take a vote on whether or not this is gonna be a proposition that's gonna go out to voters in May.
Uh, no, yeah, in October, we're looking, yeah, we're looking in the fall, because we do wanna have, um, various open forums.
Right.
Towards the end of the school year, obviously, you know, the summer's here, and then possibly one or two in September to answer all the community's questions, to really make sure they know the ins and outs of, of what this is. You know, the cost financially to, to taxpayers with, you know, Proposition Two. That is still kind of up in the air, um, because we are banking, right now, those numbers are banking on a certain amount of surplus at the, at the end of this year to put in our capital reserve. But certainly if, if we end up with more, then it would be less on the taxpayers, and we won't know that till, till July.
Because now we're at five point five, right? And we would have to, to raise out of that six point three, Maggie, you know? For Proposition Two? There's a five seven, I can't recall.
So right now, we have a total capital reserve contribution of, I believe it was two point two, I think, two point three million.
In, in our reserve, but for Proposition Two, we would still have, we, we would have to compensate that, right?
Yes, because Proposition One would utilize the, the large majority of what you have in the reserve right now to enable that proposition to be no tax increase.
Right.
So right now, based on what you've got in the reserve, we have four hundred and eighty thousand left to help offset the, the tax increases for Prop Two. But there's still, you know, a remaining local share that would be needed to be made up through the taxes. So if you can add more into the reserve or come up with additional revenues to contribute to the project, you know, that would only reduce the tax impact.
Right, and then that's outside the school envelope, right? And that's why we would have to.
Yes, because, because Prop Two is everything outside site work related. The state doesn't provide as much aid, um, on, on that type of work, so it falls more on the local share here. But I think, you know, to that point, the tax impacts that we were looking at last month when we were discussing this, we believe would be a worst-case scenario, so, you know, if you can put more into those reserves or, um, determine that you have more available fund balance at the time of the vote, that would contribute to, to reduce those impacts.
We got there? Okay, once again, thank you, I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Pro, yeah, we're just excited to help you guys chart this out. And if there's any questions, you know, as we work towards a vote in the fall, we, you know, we'll be ready to help you out and study any little site things you want us to look at. Eventually, we would be working on that secret process I talked about last time, environmental. That would be a key thing to work on over the summer to get that ready. But I think we're on track and we'll just keep, keep working on it.
Thanks again for your time.
No problem.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So, uh, tonight is, a lot to update. We don't have the, uh, project yet from the governor, uh, from the legislative side of things. So, uh, we're just going to give you a brief little update tonight. I'm sure you're all freezing, all, all of the time in presentations tonight, so trying to be quick. We're just going to do a little overview of what our revenue or our expenditure assumptions were. Where we're at bottom line right now, it's really the same as it was last month. Revenue, um, any changes or updates, talk about the capital levy and our next steps. This is really just a recap from prior months, what we made built in in some assumptions and the salaries and benefits, which is one of the biggest portions of our budget. We are a people-driven business, so. Equipment, we talked about the equipment. Josh Luxon was here tonight. He could probably advise me on this as well. Yes, it's $350,000 now. This is, these are diesel buses. We aren't yet, we're ready to buy the hydrogen ones. But we are looking to have higher revenue in auctioning our buses versus trading them in. So given the market, we think we can do better for that. Additional expenditure assumptions next year, obviously, we try and build an 100K capital project. Obviously, those are aided at 92.7%. We're going to try and combine that with the remaining money from the capital project to get a bigger project done. Really, you know, kind of looking at HVAC-type work, focusing on the fitness center, getting that, that's a priority. Some things that might have gotten, you know, pulled off in the last project that we want to try and address. This has not changed at all since last month. The biggest highlights are, you know, the salary amount of the increase, debt service being reduced. We are not having to put as, we used some capital reserve last, uh, debt service reserve this year to pay down some of the bands for the capital project. So that will get reduced next year. But we are seeing an increase in the transfer to capital line. Hopefully, to be able to do that playground, which we have, have met once already for a committee and we're planning our next meetings. So those are the big, uh, two big swings on the expense side. Still balanced, same numbers as last month. And revenue side of things, I don't have an update from state aid. Nothing really significant has changed here. We're relying less on reserves next year. That's that debt service reserve we used that reduces, I think, unclassified revenue, one of the biggest drivers, and that is our, on, the onset of that ECA education contribution agreement from Plug Power. Legislative budgets due April 1st. We should have an, I'll have more of an updated period at that point in time. Good things that we're hearing about that is they are not, they're against doing that $100,000 set aside for the high-impact tutoring, which would have been 23% of our foundation aid increase. Our foundation aid increase was only 433,000 and they wanted to restrict $100,000 of that. Foundation aid is supposed to be unrestricted aid. So it's good news for, for us and districts across the state that they're not going to do that. Especially in a year it made no, absolutely no sense in the final year of that after-school extended learning with the ARPA money to, to restrict that aid per, per district. And on the non-general fund side of things, an update that would be interesting to know about is that the Senate and Assembly both are proposing in addition to help fund free meals in schools for breakfast and lunch. We did submit our tax cap at 0%. The max we could go to would have been 3.9. But we did submit that March 1st. We can, we always do a after-budget. We do update that for accurate. If later on we, we feel the need that we needed to change that. Our average levy increase over the last, since 2012, 13, which was the first year of the tax cap legislation, we've only increased our budgets on average, our, our tax levy 0.89%. And here is that chart. We do that every year to give you. The blue line is what the allowable levy was based on the cat, cat legislation. And the yellow line is what we've gone through. This is a look just a few years out for our tax cap projections. As you see, next year, we're in a negative tax cap situation. And the reason that is, is because this year we have some capital expenditures that we're not going to have next year. So that kind of is a downward pressure on the, on the tax cap. What that means for us would be, you know, requiring a supermajority. When you go out to vote, it would have to have over 60%, but, you know, our community has, is very supportive of the district, very supportive of our budgets in the past. I don't see that being terribly problematic, but it is something that we need to be, you know, we need to be cautious about. Things can change though. We may find that we need a, there might be a capital expenditure next year. There might be something else that comes on that, that changes that number. But as you notice in the, in the outgoing years, once we get rid of big swings in our, our capital levy exclusion, that kind of levels out and you see that we don't have this, have that big swing in, in the tax cap. So, you know, if we can get through that hump of that one year, I think we're, we'll, we'll be fine with that.
Can you explain a little bit in 24, 25 and negative?
So what, what's driving that? If you see that, what's driving that is this big difference right here. This is, this year in 23, 24, what we have on our budget is, so the playground. In that $507,000 is that, that expense. So that increases our capital levy exclusion because we're spending capital, money on capital. When you take that out of there and next year we have less of that, okay? That gets reversed out and then next year's capital levy exclusion. I don't have anything big in there that we have planned. So that reduces that levy exclusion next year. So that's downward pressure on there.
So potentially even when we went out at 0% next year, it could be voted down if you don't have a supermajority?
Correct. So 0% technically exceeds the levy limit.
And so then.
I know, the legislation just makes no sense.
So then in future years, you're saying that then your levy or your projection could be more peaks and valleys versus a steady?
Nope. It's, it, so, so it kind, we kind of, we're kind of leveling out because our, our tax cap. We don't have, I haven't built in, we don't have anything built in any expected larger.
If you were to go to, if you were to go to the maximum level, that would kind of level out. But if you're going to have a 0, 0.
I could present that to you guys. I could send you a sheet that would show you that, yes. We could play that. But there's also things to consider too. The other side of it is if there's any pilots that come on, pilots or revenues downward pressure, right?
Right, the ECA, we need to stop.
Right, the ECA doesn't come into this. ECA's outside of it because it's not a pilot. But the pilot, so for example, if, when we go to structure whatever comes about with, say, what's that company? Edwards Vacuum over at, at Stamps, say they come on, and who knows what year that's going to be? When, how you structure that. So one of the things we did with Plug Power is that was structured. It's basically almost a 50-50 split. Instead of getting $700,000 on a pilot, it's about a 50-50 split between the two of them. So it, it helps in this legislation a little bit. And it gives us a little bit of freedom in that with the use of those funds. Thus, like this next year, this is the first, this coming year is the first year of the ECA. Gives us some flexibility and it made it possible for us to possibly, that first year, do that, do the playground.
So if you have a $300,000 capital project next year, similar to.
Could swing that back up.
That would make.
But then, but all you're, all you'll be doing is pushing it. You're kind of pushing it forward for next year when it comes on. Do you have something else coming on? So you can kind of make a plan. So I actually, right before we had our meeting tonight, you know, I'm always talking with Maggie about our options. You know, what can we do, do things like transfer to capital fund or transfer to pay debt? Or for the capital project, can, can that be utilized towards it? So I started that conversation with her. We're going to do some analysis and see what we can do going forward. But I'll get her involved in, in working on this with me as well to see what we can do. But I think it's okay. I'm not, I'm not as stressed about this. I, you know, I, I think there's things, like I said, I think there's things that we can do and we've always managed before, so.
So, so if we were to go out at zero again next year?
So if we go out, if, if, given this scenario, all things stay the same.
Yeah.
0% exceeds tax cap, which means we would have to have a supermajority of 60%. I think, and I don't have the numbers handy, I apologize. We were, we're about 85, 90% approval rating.
So if you vote against that, you would be saying, no, I want my taxes increased. Is that, is that, is that?
What would the contingency budget look like if the, in that year, if they were to vote that down?
So, so it's, it's, what you determine as a district is necessary. So certain things you include. So, so some districts say just equipment, get rid of any added equipment. You might say, but I have to have a mower. I have to have a bus. I have to have certain things. So it's not just a, a broad answer to say you call your equipment out of the budget to be able to get to a contingency budget. It's what's necessary for the program. So it really, you almost go line by line and say, and it, and it honestly, in a lot of tanks, it doesn't add up to be significant. A, a, usually a significant swing. I would say for the most part, for us, we normally, obviously a playground, we don't necessarily have to have. That would be something that you would pull. So say that was one year that we did that, that would be something that you would pull. But if you need a bus, you're not going to pull the bus. That's also something that factors into this. Both of them factor into it. But one is a contingent item, one's non-contingent.
One thing that would be interesting to look at, if you're looking at like the psychology of people when it comes to this type of thing, is what Tabia said. I don't know if you guys read those articles, but they're going out over their tax cap allowance and so they're going to require a supermajority. So keep your eyes on that to look.
Right, and there are statistics in the state about the ones, the number of districts, and again, I don't have that at my fingertips, about the number of districts that go above it and how many of those get defeated and how many get approved.
Is it significantly above? Did you know that?
It's like, it's like 6%, is that what they're doing, something like that? And their number was like two? It was like no way they could get to what they need to do.
And, and a lot of it is to, is to fill their, their budget gap. So a lot of the school districts already have a positive tax levy. So someone may say, hey, look at our max tax levy's at, like ours is at 3.9. If we can't close our budget and say, geez, we're short, you know, $109,000, we got to go, you know, two, you know, we're, we're going to go out at a six. That's what most districts do to cover the gap. They don't normally talk about a negative tax cap, which is what we're looking at. So we could go out next year at a 0% and say, you know, there's no, there's no real tax increase, but we still need that 60% of a majority vote because we are technically, legally, mathematically going over what our cap is. But a lot of the caps you're talking about are positive and they're just wanting more. We're just, we're just faced with a negative tax cap. So it's almost in essence that the district would be losing money and giving, you know.
You could. So what would happen is your budget would get voted down the first time. If, say it got voted down the first time and Maggie people said, no, I'm not going to do it. If you didn't get, if you got 59% and you didn't pass, you could go out with a contingent budget in June. And you could go out again with the same thing. You could present the same thing or you could present something else. Worst-case scenario, if it doesn't pass in June, you go with your contingent budget. Like I said, typically for us, we've kind of built contingent budgets. We're pretty close and spot on. Like I said, next year's is kind of an oddball for that because we are going to, you know, we did kind of build in the capital transfer for the playground. But for the most part, our budgets are pretty, pretty close to being a contingent budget to begin with. There might be a few things that we pull out of there, but it's, it's not very much. So I don't think there's a huge risk to the district of us having to do, we wouldn't have to reduce the levy. We wouldn't have to, you know, we would have to cross, we would cross that bridge when we came to it. But I think that, I don't think it's a huge risk for programs in the district. I don't think we'd have to do cuts like that.
I, I think you can also make the case, the community, from the slide that you showed a few before, that we look at where our tax increases have been over the years. And if we're going out at zero this year, it's not as though we have been a greedy district over the years. If we're zero this year and we're asking to go zero again next year, whatever that number turns out to be.
And your, and your averages have been 0.89 over the life of the tax cap legislation. I think, you know, to say that you've stuck, you know, you've done your due diligence as, as board members to, you know, present fiscally responsible, tax-friendly budgets to your community has been, I, I, I think, you know, the community can commend.
There's a case to fall back on there, right? That it's not as though we're going out for this year and we're asking for zero supermajority next year.
Yeah, I mean, we did a 0% in 2021. You've done a 0% in 23. You did go to a negative back here, but, you know, you know, you've, you've done, you've, you've always stayed below. You've been very responsible, you know, with it. And you've never exceeded it. You've never exceeded your, your, you know, allowable.
That 1.95 there was the thick of COVID when it looked as though everything was going to shut down.
Right, right. And who knew? You know, you were threatened with 20% aid cuts.
Yeah.
And what would that, what would that reflect? If you had a 20% aid cut on, on, you know, when you're looking at your, your revenue side of your budget, you've got $16 million in state aid. If, if someone says I'm going to hold 20% of $16 million from your district, that's significant. And that's, you know, nerve-wracking. And in that year, you went to 1.95.
So that year, play it out, 24, 25, 25, 26, how's that yellow line going to play? Does it go up and down like this or is it going to be?
Well, the yellow line is you guys.
Right.
You say, what you, you know, you decide what you want us to do. That, that blue line is what follows this right here. That's this number right there.
That's your maximum level.
That's what your maximum level increases.
We haven't gone there, concerned.
We've never gone there.
Correct. So if you're looking at the yellow line.
The yellow line.
So knowing everything that's going to be taking place also in the future with the federal funds dropping out and so forth and so on, if we go out to zero and have blue line, how's that going to look in 25, 26, or 24, 25, 25, 26 and moving forward?
Right. Things to consider. Because this year, this year also is the first year that we start, you know, having to pull back some of the expenses that we're paying. You know, if we want to continue some of the things we're doing with the ARPA funds, we're going to have, have to continue those on in the general fund. So it'll be an interesting budget year. Already looking to, to do some forecasting with that. But, so it's just a, you know, a quick look ahead. Again, just to be aware of it, not anything I think right now that this district needs to really stress over. Next up, April 1st is legislative budget. Once we have numbers and see how that, if there's any swings to our revenue side of things, we will certainly let you know. Right now, we have a balanced budget. I don't foresee us losing anything on the revenue side of things. I don't think the look, the governor's budget is going to be impactful to us, our ability to keep our budget in a balanced mode right now, so. And then in April 18th is when we do the final legislative presentation and you guys adopt the budget for us to be able to take that up to the voters. May 9th is the budget hearing and then May 17th is when everyone comes to vote. And we have any other questions?
Thanks. Thank you so much, Christine.
You're welcome.
On the minutes, be it resolved, the minutes of the February 28th, 2023 regular meeting be approved?
So.
I get a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Carla, do you have any visitors for last night?
I did, I need to.
Okay. Onto our approval of minutes. Be it resolved that have been audited, the bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims, audit reports be approved? Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.2 Treasurers Report. Be it resolved that the Treasurers' reports for November, December 2022 and January 2023 be approved? Can I get a motion? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Christine, unless you'd like to talk some more?
I will, I will pass the baton.
Mr. Fiskus, what do you have for us?
The Mary Poppins musical was this past weekend. I attended Friday night and I hope that. I attended Friday night, and I hope that every community member, staff member, board member, um, was able to attend. What an unbelievable show. Um, the student talent was absolutely incredible. Usually you have, you know, um, a handful of kids that, you know, take the leading roles and, and can sing and act. And there was not, I mean, the whole, the whole show was incredible. The amount of singing, the choreography, the dancing, the acting, it was just unbelievable. Um, so, you know, congratulations to Wendy for another successful production and, and the great entertainment. It was packed here on Friday night. And I also, you know, want to give a shout out to Holly Hudson for directing the pit crew. Their musical arrangements with the students, um, and their singing was extraordinary. It was, it was just, it was great to watch. Um, the kids put in such, uh, long hours and, and a really long weekend to, to pull off those three productions. It was just extraordinary. I was, I was just thrown back by just the amount of talent that, that our kids have. Um, I want to give a huge shout out to Dave Carpino and his photography class. They helped capture pictures of students in the musical, and we were able to display the cast and crew on our new interactive panels in the front lobby during the musical. I do want to give Rob and Alex and Cagney, um, you know, some kudos. Um, they helped get those panels working. As you are aware, the original software company that we were going with to help us upload, you know, that content and material went under. So, um, they had really only a trial, a trial demo to work with, and, um, they, they made it work. And I want to thank them because they were busy trying to upload things just to get ready for the musical. And I know it took hours and hours of their time to do that. But, um, it was up there, and I think, you know, the parents and the kids enjoyed being able to see that and, and experience that. And so, um, once we get beyond the demo stage of those interactive panels, you're going to see a lot more content and a lot more cool stuff on, on those panels. So, um, thank you, Rob and, and Cagney and, and Alex for that. Our mock trial team, um, advised by, you know, our own Mr. Pete Buehler is heading into the finals tomorrow evening at the Orleans County Courthouse, so good luck. Um, and I would like to thank board member Maria Thompson for spending a couple of days with us this week and with our PE department to share her family stories, uh, with students on why learning CPR is so important. So our students learned how to provide hands-only CPR, and I'm proud to know that, that our students were afforded that great opportunity. I attended one of the sessions this morning, and it was very, it was powerful. It was, um, it was neat to have, have you come and, and, you know, share, share the importance of it. Um, the kids got a lot out of it. So, you know, thank you to Katie and Mike for, for setting that activity up for our district. And last but not least, our spring recess is coming up at the end of next week and runs through the Monday after Easter, April tenth. Um, our students and staff will be back here on the eleventh, and it's well-needed and well-deserved. Um, so happy spring break, everybody. Things, things are great, and that's all I got.
Thanks, John. According to our student services, Michelle.
All right, so yesterday we had our conference day. Um, part of the conference day, I met with the middle high school counselors, with Chad and Kristen, but as well as our transition teacher, Terry Roberts. We looked specifically at transition in general, um, and then looking specifically at our students with IEPs and five oh fours, and how we are better aligning them with things after school and careers or college and things like that. So using Terry to collaborate with Chad and Kristen on identifying students that might need some more one-on-one support with a transition assessment or shadowing, uh, certain career, or going out and doing some career exploration, um, going to BOSEs and seeing things more one-on-one than that full tour and field trip that they do. So it was a really good conversation about going forward into next year and working together, um, on identifying students and really sitting and working with them on those assessments and identifying their strengths or their weaknesses and aligning them with careers, um, that they'll be successful in. So it was really good.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yep.
Uh, Connie?
Um, like Michelle said, we had our conference day yesterday. There were a lot of different things going on, I'm going to highlight just a few more. I know Matt and J.C. are going to talk about some as well. A lot of curriculum work going on, um, to piggyback kind of on what Maria participated in. Our PE department was doing CPR, first aid, AED in PE class. We also offered the opportunity for our staff on the conference day. So teachers, aides, assistants, related service personnel were able to take a CPR, AED overview if they wanted to. There was also a Narcan training. Um, we also provided for our buildings and ground staff and our cafeteria staff. They participated in a CPR, AED. So Officer Alejandro and our two school nurses facilitated that. The feedback for that was great, they were thrilled to be part of that because they are one-on-one with our kids. And sometimes we don't always think in a conference day that, oh, we should be providing opportunities for this population as well. Um, some of the curriculum stuff that was really exciting, our math and lit teams, which you've heard about before, they're pre-K eight now, and it's hard to find times where they can be all together. So both math team and literacy team, so math teams facilitated by Kristen Leicher and literacy teams facilitated by Chris Assanti. They had the whole morning session to work with their pre-K through eighth grade teams, so a lot of great learning went on there. Um, I spent a lot of my time with science. We know we have our new fifth grade state assessment coming up and eighth grade state assessment coming up next year. Middle school's been pretty good because they've, they, their curriculum for middle school, it's six through eight, and they've got it mapped out. We have separate science classes in our elementary. We needed to do a little bit more focused work, so fourth and fifth grade have been doing a great job, they're departmentalized. We brought on our third grade team this year to utilize our BOSEs for science kits like the fourth and fifth were. Lynn and I talked, and we decided, you know what? We need to, next year, look at our second grade, our first grade and our kindergarten. And without overwhelming the teachers too much, because the kits are a lot, we, um, decided that we'll start one kit at each grade level. So I spent a lot of time with some of our elementary teachers making those decisions. What does it look like from kindergarten up through fifth grade in science? Where do the units overlap? What are the overarching themes? And this group was able to identify where there are gaps at the lower levels, identify the kits that they could use to support learning and spiral it up to get the kids prepared. So that was amazing. Um, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade were really working together to solidify their curriculum because again, we have a new eighth grade science test coming up as well. So that was amazing work. Um, a lot of other curriculum work I did not, Matt and I try, tried to bounce around. We didn't get to every single group to spend time, but teachers provided that opportunity to really, um, shore up on their curriculum. So those were kind of some of the highlights, and I know, again, Matt and J.C. will talk about some of the other things that happened. But it was a good day.
I have one question on the AED discussion with, with Marianne, with, with a lot of these reports, and they're talking about schools. And, uh, you know, she showed up for school board meetings and asked how many AEDs you have in all your facilities? How far away are they? How many do you have per, uh, student, how many students per AED? And then for our sports, um, that occur outdoors, do we? I shouldn't even have to get that question.
No, no, so we actually just, we actually just, yeah, we actually just doubled the amount of AEDs we have within the district. Um, one of the great things, because we have our full-time athletic trainer when he attends games, is he has a portable AED. So down there for our football games, there is, there is one down there. We do have a couple of portable ones in the nurse's office, um, for our PE classes. Or, you know, um, if he, if he is not here assigned to our campus for baseball games or softball games, we have one, um, you know, with, with-
In the, in the-
Correct, with our chaperone. So, uh, do you know how many total, J.C., do we have now in the district?
Two, three, four.
I want to say we have-
I think it's thirty-six.
I was going to say, I think we just upped it to six or eight.
We ordered six new ones.
We had, we had three existing.
Yeah, and we ordered six.
Ordered six, we have a total of nine now?
Correct. Well, some were going to phase out, some of that we were going to replace. Um, we're also moving one from this building to the bus garage, so there'll be one in each building again.
Correct.
Whereas right now, there's not one currently.
Is there a formula, it's like how many?
I was going to say.
It was on, it was like, it, there's, how many min, minutes or seconds would it take you to get to one and get back? And then there's how many?
Person, student, yeah, that'd be interesting.
Right, so there's one right outside the nurse's office here, which they tell you to locate it very close to your gymnasium because that's where you, you have most of your events. They want you to obviously have ones that are portable if you have outside events, which we, you know, we have, you know, a handful of them. But again, it helps as, as far as having a full-time athletic trainer, he always has one on him as well, so. Um, we're covered in that area, and like I said, I think with just, um, working with Dennis at year one, we were just able to just, why don't we purchase a few extra just, just to have, so.
With the new ones, we have two additional units in each building. So right now, there's the one in the hallway, this building has three, the elementary school has one, elementary school has three as well.
Do these have like a maintenance type or inspection-based or, or contract with someone, or do we have someone in-house to keep tabs on that?
Checks, checks their expiration date and keeps them up. That's why some of the ones that we're buying are replacements for ones.
Like the batteries and everything that have to be.
And the new ones we ordered are the new top of the line, and I think it's version five, if I'm not mistaken, where it will talk to you and it'll tell you if you're compressing too hard, too little. It literally walks you right through every single step of the way and gives you coaching if you're doing it correctly.
And then on the training, say again, like who of the staff did we say, like?
Well, all of our coaches are, are cert, CPR, first aid certified. Um, our nurses, Deputy Alejandro is, we have some first responders in each building. So we keep a list of who is certified, but it's not a, um, mandate, I guess. We're, we're working on being able to offer that certification for more people who want to take it. We're working on that some bolt on that area.
But one day was a sign up as you wanted, so Connie had a form, but anybody that was an employee of ours had the availability to go to any of those sessions at their voluntary.
And that one wasn't certification, that was the overview.
Hands-only. And you have people internally that are able to provide that certification and recertification. So you can continue to offer this throughout the year.
That's the goal.
Or even over the summer months, so that people come in certified.
The goal is that actually anybody who wants to be certified can be.
Would you ever extend that to, to kids as of like fifteen and up, or whatever the age appropriate, whatever students? Would that be a possibility? I don't know if this is shooting it out, but like an elective component?
Legally, I wouldn't see why not.
What's that?
Unless there was a reason why legally we couldn't, I wouldn't see why not.
I know just through lifeguard certification, fifteen and up, they can get it, so I don't know if there's any other component, but that would be.
I do know there are some districts that are able to do, like they have LGI instructors and they have CPR, EED instructors on site, and I think they offer it almost like an AP.
Like an elective.
What's the LG?
Um, so a lifeguard instructor.
Oh, okay.
So we have them at the Y, but some of the other schools that have pools, they have LGI, but they also have CPR, AED responding to emergencies, instructors that are able to certify teachers and students once they, you know, are a certain age, but that would be great.
Cool stuff about the science as well. I like to hear you guys talking about those. I hate, I hate the word kits because it seems like it's so silly and, and childish, but those, those kits are really, really well laid out. And man, I, I think one's a great idea. I, I'd love to see all four or be instituted, and they're so easy to do.
Fifth grade, fourth grade, we've had the last two years, all four. Third grade started all four this year to ramp up. Um, again, not to overwhelm second, first and kindergarten. The thought was, we'll start with one, and the team selected which kit? And they strategically looked at, what standards are we covering really well in second grade? Where do we have misses? Where do we need to be able to support the upper grades?
Like locked together, like one and four locked together.
They did an amazing job.
So we had K-five all in one room, so there was representative from each grade level. And then, like Connie's explaining, they also took the other resources, your GOs, your Gizmos, all the things, the studies weekly. And they really looked at the science standards from the state, how they were hitting all the science standards. And kindergarten, for example, said, we're not doing enough with the pulley, that should be our kit. They don't do enough with these resources that we currently have at our disposal, and it's a lot more hands-on. So that's one of the reasons they picked their kit. So they were very, very deliberate with their conversations, um, top-down and back and forth. And Amy and Mike Lamar, kudos to them because they have absorbed this and they are just taking the lead on it, and they're so helpful to their colleagues. So those conversations were really important.
It's not just a C test anymore in fourth grade, like you really have to deliver.
Start in third grade, and, yep.
And like, like kindergarten and that, like this has to be.
Because Mike and Amy, because we have teachers going to the investigations trainings too, because the state has these new investigations that you're going to go, that will go along with the written test. And Mike has already attended one at this point, and other teachers will be doing it as well. But he was able to come back and bring just more live relevant information. One of the big talking points was, science looks different. Yes, younger grades did used to have ESP kits. Mike and Amy were like, it is nothing like that. Our students need to think differently. Mike was sitting there trying to explain, you're going to want to tell them, but no, you, you let them figure it out, they're coming up with solutions. And he was able to share, how was, he had a shift as teaching. It, it said, you, you're not teaching the same way. So it was nice for the colleagues to just be able to help each other out and give, they had three and a half hours in the morning, just a dedicated chunk of time, some scaffolds, like we wanted to know by the end, like what kit do you think you will pick for second grade? Just, you know, for planning purposes. But it was their time to support each other. Mike and Amy were immense teacher leaders. We gave them the overview and they ran it, and it was better. The two of us shouldn't have been running it.
The ones the kits are kind of worked out, some of the kinks, Mike went to a training and one of the kits completely failed, and the state is really trying to figure out why. So once that's all.
Um, well Monroe too does it all because BOSEs for science.
Yeah, because I, I created one of the kits.
But you can GB, they're doing trainings at GB.
Heard processes, no, it didn't fail.
Yeah, I want to know which one did you, yeah.
Cloud in a bottle?
Tell me what's in the bottle.
Was it cloud in a bottle, we're having some issues with cloud in the bottle.
There's a lot of cloud in the bottles.
But isn't the bottle out?
Cloud in a bottle.
Cloud in a bottle. I want to get out of that tinker that.
The goal is to actually talk, we've talked with Christine about having some where we purchase our own, so that, I would love to be able to sit down with, with the STEM situation and say, we have these kits, how can we parse this out? How can we add this as a STEM? So it's not just looking at the teachers and have them, all the curriculum on their own, but really start doing that cross boundaries. So we have plans for the future, it's just going to take us some time to get there.
Fuck, you're carving out time for science and social science, which is not the case in any school for a very long time in the primary.
Well, science used to be a scary word in elementary as well.
Yeah, until you got in fourth grade, then you had to get this.
And then you had to, all of a sudden, you forgot.
Right, all of a sudden, you got to tell them where the sun's at.
Yep.
Not according to the law, do you?
No, right, no. Yeah, 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 thanks, Connie.
Can we go?
All right, yeah, here. Uh, Jay, uh, Lynn, you're next.
So I'm just going to quickly talk about the playground. Um, I know that Christine's referenced it, the last couple of board meetings. We had our first meeting with our committee. We had, um, a parent rep, we had the architects from both the playground and SCI. Um, the committee has the, the, uh, catalogs, they went through, they picked out some different pieces of equipment. I've sent those to Andy Walsh, who we're working with. He's now going to design a couple mockups for us, depending on what the budget will allow us to do. From there, I'm going to be visiting with third, fourth and fifth grade students, exploring what they like, which pieces of equipment are they really drawn to? Then we're going to go back to the adult committee, share that information and kind of narrow down our focus for the scope of work that we can afford.
Is it, is it, are you looking at a single playground, or are you looking at a small?
No, we are looking at something to be very different. Um, I don't want it to be a standard, here we are with a slide and some swings, everybody has that. We already have that on our campus, we have that in our town. So we're looking at ways to really add physical fitness into it, um, where our phys ed staff was there, our PE teacher, our, I'm sorry, our PT teacher and our, um, Lindsay, our nurse, was there, just to help really work on the fitness of levels, where you can climb, you can jump. Um, also, as a mom, when my kid was on the playground, I'm sitting there, I want things that my community members can do. So thinking about things that as an adult, when you have your kids, what can you also do to be physically active with your child alongside of them? So it's going to be a different approach to a playground, it's not your standard playground, which I'm excited about because there's not a lot of those options in our area.
There's cool stuff, though.
There's really cool stuff.
Um, J.C., any updates?
I do, so Sarah Lachabon, our behavior specialist, and I presented the first of our rollout for TCI, therapeutic crisis intervention. So how do we de, teaching, how do we de-escalate students before they hit a crisis mode? It was a three-hour overview we provided to teachers, aides, some teachers, aides and assistants, um, very well-received. The very beginning phases, so this was a three-hour overview. We're looking at doing some courses over the summer, that would be three to four days long of training. So it's the very beginning implementation stages of our TCIS model. How do we, um, help our students with their behavior and de-escalate them when we see them becoming elevated?
Thanks, J.C. Mr. Peterson?
Um, I have a few things. I'll start with, um, piggybacking off of the conference day. A shout out to Connie, who I think doesn't take a lot of credit and probably is embarrassed that I mentioned her, but these days don't go off-
But these days don't go off without a hitch, uh, without the hard work she puts in behind the scenes. And it is a lot of hard work and organization, and she kind of brings us together. So Connie, um, I think she knows how I feel about her, I think she's awesome, but kudos to her for, for putting that together and putting in the hard work. Um, among other things that I worked on yesterday was the item analysis that we presented on a few months ago with Mr. Porter. We uh, worked with all the content areas for the regents exams uh, by department, and they continued that process within their own departments. Building whatever processes they thought worked for their department. Um, Mr. Porter kind of shared what he did, and I thought it was a very productive morning. So I wanted to highlight that. And also two things uh, that are going on, one is tonight, uh, a close-up trip, just got back from DC. It's a great, great opportunity for our kids. Tracy Slaggenoff took seven kids to DC. Uh, I think they pitched it as DC is a classroom where they learn about civics and participation and personal connections. So that was last week, and Link Olympics with Mr. Buehler and Mr. Slaggenoff is in the gym tonight. Kind of some fun, uh, camaraderie, fellowship. But that program, Link Crew, is designed to put high school students with freshmen in transition from middle school to high school. It's a great program.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson. Uh, Mr. Zee?
Well, we were looking at our three-year refresh cycle for the Chromebooks. Um, cause in the eight years that I've been here, it seems like in the beginning, it was Smart Schools funding that was used for a couple of years to fund up our, our Wonder World Chromebooks. Then after that, we moved into the COVID years, where we had some special funding there with E-Rate. Now we're kind of looking at district budget, having to purchase things. So we're investigating, we're using this uh, MIPA, multi-year uh, purchase agreement with Bosse's, which is a great way to spread the cost over three, four or five years. So I looked at the breakage history. Um, three years is our ideal to have a, a Chromebook in service with students. Four years is probably, many of them can. In five years, I have some that are even six years old, those kind of turn into the loners. So I looked at, I took the breakdown from K through twelve, and then a separate group for this, the adults and staff. Um, looking at what models they have now and which ones we will have to replace in the coming years. And we're actually better off than I thought we were, in terms of how many we need to purchase, um, to keep up with that three-year cycle. So the multi-year purchase agreement with Bosse's, we're gonna shoot for three years, knowing that we probably will get more than three years for Chromebooks. And uh, Brant at Bosse's brought up a good point. He said, when we're replacing screens, and it's not too often, but screens or cases for these things. We pay more for the individual parts, like if you have a vehicle, than we do for buying a brand-new one. So for example, if this Chromebook is $700, the screen might be $350, uh, the case might be $250, the logic board might be $440. You add all that up, that's more than what we bought the unit for. So he had a theory of what if you bought the, your inventory upfront, knowing that you'll need it. Therefore, you will never have to wait for a $400 screen to come in in three months. You'll have it from your inventory in advance. So we're running the numbers to see, what statistically do we have for breakages that we can buy in advance? And have the units, we can disassemble and, and as, as they call it Frankenstein, take the parts out, a keyboard here, a trackpad there, a screen there. And use those to repair our future breakages, which I thought was a great way to do it, because then we're taking advantage of that state aid. You know, we're getting the eighty-three percent back. We're just buying units in advance, maybe five percent or so, uh, in plans to take them apart and use them. So we're kind of funding our own repair parts in, upfront, and not having to wait for uh, parts to come in. That's our big issue now is waiting for parts, and knowing that we have a good price on those parts, and we're not paying a premium for them. So kudos to Brant for thinking of that idea, and we're gonna build that into our, uh, and our, our, our quantity. And I'm thinking maybe only five to seven percent uh, more, but that will save us in the long run, so.
So like a parts room, I'm seeing in my brain?
Yeah, we, we have some sitting on the shelf for plans not to deploy out to students, but plans to take apart and use. When we need a screen, we'll pull from our own inventory of screens, rather than have Brant order one for us. And we already have one at a lower cost. So of course, you don't wanna have too many sitting on the shelf, so we have to look at, statistically speaking, how many screens per year, how many cases, how many trackpads. Um, and using the data from the tickets that we have, we, we can do that. So it's uh, it's interesting, it's.
Does anybody else do that, Rob?
He said, people are starting to do that, just because of the fact that you're waiting for screens and you're waiting six months for a screen. Wouldn't it be great if you already have one yourself? And you have it, that's uh, you know, $200 that you paid for, instead of a $500 screen that you're waiting for. So time-wise and money-wise, if you can front-load it a little bit, and you're still getting that state aid, uh, it's kind of a new, new philosophy. It's kind of a, a come out from the, you know, the supply chain issues. Yeah, Franken studying, yeah.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah. And Lynn, what? He, he also provided you with his ten-year plan in part of your, uh, that, your.
Ten-year plan.
We'll talk about that later. Uh, Lynn was here and I think she departed, um, right? And um, Chad is not here. Adam, any news?
Yeah, so uh, yeah, I um, I asked around a little bit about what people, uh, kids in school thought about the uh, specific position two of the um, capital project, like what they thought of the new stadium getting moved, concessions built into the school. New locker rooms, different locations and stuff like that. And uh, everybody seemed to be on board, they really liked the idea of getting an eight-lane track, the turf field, bigger stadium. And uh, so everybody's really excited about that. Obviously, we'll never see it, or at least get to play on it, but it'll uh, it'll be good for the kids that are coming up through the program. They'll be able to have a nice facility like that.
Great, thank you, that points back. You're, you're back to, back to it.
Thanks, JC.
Thank you. Uh, all right, um, on the new business, be it resolved that item seven point two through seven point seven be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, sorry, guys. There we go, Karla, uh, no, uh, new communications on the Bible stuff, that's over. Right, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, um, the discussion roundtable, John, I don't think there's anything here. Um, and I'm gonna change the consent agenda just a little bit for this person. Um, so I'm gonna do, um, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves items ten point two through ten point four. Can I get a motion? So, uh, second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so I'm at ten point five, um, really quickly. Um, ten point five is about the lifeguards. Uh, be it resolved, uh, that the following people be approved to be lifeguards as needed throughout the school year. And because uh, Lily uh, and Jackie are looking to be.
No, that's okay, yeah, we'll just hold it up.
She's gonna abstain uh, from that, because she can't really vote for herself.
Why, I'm going person by person, you're trying to.
Get her out?
Yeah.
You know what I thought about?
That's where you were going with this.
Yeah, I'm a clever guy, but I'm not that clever. Uh, I'm gonna take a couple more minutes about for me. Yeah. Uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes. You're in, Jackie, you're, you're. Oh, we, never mind, I'm gonna keep this over, yes. Uh, okay, uh, we are not going in an executive session tonight. So, uh, closing remarks. What's up? Uh, Jeff, any closing remarks tonight?
I don't, just congratulations to uh, our winner athletes and teams and everything looked good and uh, proud of the girls and the track kids and on the spring, hopefully.
Yeah, right, it's coming, I hear.
I think so.
I think yesterday was smart, right?
Slowly mounting, slowly mounting. Looking forward to see what the uh, the new condition of our, our fields are down there for the fall improvements and good to go, hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully, I hope so. Thanks, uh, Mr. Hyde, uh, Brandon?
Yeah, so uh, I'll echo what Jeff said, congrats. I'm Ben, super excited for your CPR AED. Um, and then I just wanted to say that, you know, the community is mourning a great loss right now with the Merkel family. So our, our thoughts and prayers are with Kelly and the kids, uh, during this difficult time, so just wanted to say that.
Uh, thank you, uh, Brandon, uh, Matt?
Yeah, same thing as you said there, Brandon, it's a tough thing for the community, hopefully the school does everything they can for the family there. Um, Jeff, I did run into Jordan earlier today, and uh, he's anticipating hopefully getting sports teams on these fields. I had honestly forgotten about all the work that we've done in the fall, remind me, so.
I can't believe you forgot. Mr. Precipitation, right?
I feel like it's still, it's still like snow out there.
No, they were, uh, he was talking about rolling, rolling the outfield. Um, I know Mike and, both Mike and Jeff are chomping to get on the bit. I know Mike sent an email yesterday saying, can I get on the field? Um, and I joked, I'm like, there's still snow out there. Um, but Jordan said, um, I know Thursday looks a little rainy, but he thinks that a lot of progress was made just, just yesterday and today with the wind and not having it rain or snow. Um, that uh, yeah, he's, he's hopeful that uh, within the next four to five days, we'll see what, how much rain Thursday, Friday brings. But he can get on them starting next week.
Yeah, uh, the presentations, that live presentation is probably one of the best presentations I've seen in seven years. That was pretty cool, um, the kids are doing a great job and the leaders there too. That's it.
Thanks, Matt. Pete?
I think it's great to see our kids uh, excelling at all different levels, you know, not just sports, with Legos and everything. And I just feel like the um, no matter what we throw at our kids, they're excellent in all different areas, you know? And it's not like just one area of our school district is, is excellent. And I think that's just uh, really good to be able to, that we're off, able to offer such rounded experiences for our kids that don't just necessarily focus on one thing. And, and you know, you can see the outdoor track team go from what we made last year, fifteen kids maybe, to what did I say, fifty kids this year? Um, and really, you know, we all had that fear of how that was gonna pull from the other sports, but I think it's been pretty seamless of like, we're ready just to kind of roll through that, and I think that's good. Just kind of shows how strong the district is, and it's great to have a lot of different uh, things off our fields.
Thanks, dude. Yeah?
Yeah, it's been an exciting month, it's uh, the district is amazing. That's what Pete was saying, I believe, also that we're well-rounded, you know? When you think about uh, Mary Poppins this past weekend was excellent and uh, instructionally, academically, how the kids are excelling, the Saturday program, you know, that we've talked about throughout the year. The Lego, you know, these kids are getting a leg up, you know, bad term, but. Yes, you know, I mean, getting, getting involved in that at such a young age and knowing that this is the future. You know, you talked about elementary science kits, the, you know, the, the other Bosse's for science kits that are out there and available. Just across the board, you know? And here we are in spring, hopefully, you know, as you mentioned. It's a long haul, but also kudos to the best out to the staff out there, you know, working tirelessly to, to make all this happen. I just think it's a great time and uh, the district's doing awesome, and, and again, the thoughts are with the Merkel family, just a little time.
Thanks, yeah. Jackie?
Hi, uh, yeah, like the excitement for all the kids and, and the musical is, is really great. The sports, that like you guys said, everything coming full um, circle with the support of the district, everybody around. I mean, behind the scenes, to just know some of the kids in it and the people putting a part of Mary Poppins alone is just, it blows your mind how, how layers and layers of people staying here late at night, Wendy Bergman staying so late to do everything. And it's, it's just amazing, and same thing with, you know, Lego League, how much time goes into this. Those kids have been doing it since what, October, first August?
August, yeah, before Labor Day.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it, people don't see it on the surface as much, and we get to see these presentations, but thankful that everybody has a hand in this and the people helping and, and the support of the district. It's, I'm really proud to be part of this district, so good job, and kudos to everybody.
Thanks, Jackie. So before I left, and I, I asked my daughter Natalie, she's in the uh, second grade, which I said tonight in class, and she said, keep it short, Dan. She's like, you can't, and I said, I, I, I will, I, I, I will keep it short. I think so much happens in a month, we forget it actually happened in a month, right? And one of the things that I really enjoyed this past month was the Pops concert. I thought that was fantastic. Um, it was just really cool to see different kids spotlighted, and it was, it was a fun night to watch the kids perform. I think all said and done with throughout the course of this month, it just seems like things are adding up in a positive way. Um, I do feel like we need to have spring break really soon. Um, I, the cabin fever is like real, I think, and, and kids need to, to get a little distance from each other. So I, I, I appreciate what the teachers do in the classroom and what administration's doing to kind of keep the pot from boiling over, because this is a tricky time of year. I, too, uh, my sympathies go out to the Merkels, uh, as well, and he's a great dad. And uh, his parents were great parents that I've always had the uh, opportunity to know and love. Um, so hopefully our school district can, can surround those kiddos and lift them up to the best that they possibly can. I know myself, I was lucky enough to be in a positive situation where I lost my mom, and the district was here to help me uh, make it through. Different situation, um, but loss is a loss nonetheless, so my thoughts go out to uh, the whole Merkel family. And uh, we're, we're there for it, if, if we can be. So, um, with that being said, uh, almost the end of March, uh, thank you. And uh, I'd like to, uh, be it resolved that remains adjourned at seven, four and six. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, can I say? Good. Labor?
Aye.
Motion passes, have a good evening, everyone.